To the flag of the United States of America. And to the bond of the first citizens. One nation, under God. In this world, where every angel is a star.
It's really quiet in this hall. It's like you're not alone. I would like to point out that the mayor is not in attendance tonight, but is observing us. As long as I believe that's what that is. He has concerns regarding the Delta variant and family members who he's concerned about exposing them, as well as, as his brother-in-law points out, a flooded basement. So I'm gonna fill in.
You turn the mics on?
Excuse me?
Did you turn the mic on?
No, I didn't.
That's why I don't get it.
I gotta find the switch. How about now?
Okay, then I won't repeat anything I just said.
I need a motion to approve the village board meetings from August 5th, 2021. Move.
All in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Citizens comments. We have Marcia Lamorand with the VFW Post 153 to discuss an event. And where did our podium and mic go?
That's okay. I am here on behalf of the VFW Auxiliary, and we would like to hold a fundraiser, a flag some fundraiser that people can buy flags and in honor of a veteran. And we would like to be able to post the flags. We had thought about the village square, and we'd also thought about the juncture coming down 31, where it splits 31 and Anita Street. We'd like to put the flags up the Sunday before Veterans Day and take them, remove them the Sunday after Veterans Day. This is the flag. They would all come with a ribbon that would have the veteran's name and their branch of service and all of the proceeds that we would gain from selling the flags. We run a veterans food pantry that services local veterans in Baldwinsville. We service homeless veterans shelter in Syracuse at the holidays. The Post offers community, space for communities to gather. So we have the Boy Scouts gathering. We have several community organizations gathering. So because of COVID, we haven't really been able to do large fundraising. So this is a way that we figure we can safely raise money. And hopefully, the village will be okay if we are able to use communal spaces so that people would be able to see the flags regularly in that one week period before they get removed.
Is there either for?
Well, we would like to have enough flags sold that we could use both spaces. But probably if we had to choose a space, it would probably be the juncture space coming down 31 heading west where it's, you know, there's the Anita Street split, only because we feel like a lot, a lot of people would see those, would see the flags. So, but if, I mean, our hope is to sell enough that we could post in both places, have them in both places.
Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
There's no sales at these locations?
No, 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 no. All the sales are done before, with the closure date to be probably that Friday before, so that we have enough time to finish off placing all the ribbons on the flags. And then we would, you know, I don't know whether we would need a village, somebody there from the village to give us or could give us guidelines ahead of time. Yeah.
The county's enforcement.
Chuck was so good.
Decide we're not the place.
Yes. So hopefully, that direction would be given prior to Sunday because we certainly don't want the village to pay anybody to work on, on Sunday. So, but that can all be set up ahead of time.
Good. Anybody have any comments, thoughts?
Would you like to make a statement about how people would buy the flags? On the website or something along those lines?
We are going, we will be posting it on Facebook. There will be, it'll be in the Messenger. There will be a couple of phone numbers and email addresses. My email is mlamorand@msn.com. My Google number is 315-288-6099. So those will be two of the main ways that people would be able to contact to get a flag. Also Facebook Messenger. The VFW Auxiliary, Post 153 Auxiliary has a web, has a Facebook page. And so you can message us there. And there will be signs all over Baldwinsville about it. And we're gonna post an ad in the Messenger. A penny saver.
What's the donation?
We're thinking $10 just to help offset cost of advertising and then still make enough that we can run our programs through the winter. Given that we don't know what COVID is gonna do, it's rearing its ugly head again. And we usually do, you know, Thanksgiving dinners and Christmas dinners and bags of food for our local veterans. And then we do gift baskets and gift cards for the homeless veterans shelter, which is in Syracuse. And then we do a kids' Christmas party. So we have a lot of, a lot of winter events that we need to fund with one or two only fundraising events, so.
If someone wished to purchase a flag but doesn't necessarily have a veteran they want and honored, does the VFW have a list of people that they would put the tag on?
That's a great idea. We certainly will come up with a veteran for you if you would like that person's name. We are going to run an ad in the Messenger on Veterans Day week of all the veterans that were honored through the flag buying. So if you want, don't know a veteran and wanna name a veteran, we most certainly will help you with that.
I know there's some veterans that don't have a lot of family.
Right.
Themselves, yeah.
Yes, thank you. That's a great suggestion.
Anyones have any other questions for, for Marcia? Well, we wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And then you can just connect with Greg.
Here's my card, so you'll have my email.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
The next item under citizens comments are the Baldwinsville Lions Club to discuss community park events.
How should we do this?
Just so that he can see it on the camera.
Okay. We're here because of an insurance problem. We had a proposed craft and trunk sale for June 19th. We've sent it to the village asking if there was any village requirements in April.
Basically applying for the permit to use the village for this event.
Yeah. The village replied that there was a permit needed and that insurance was needed. We submitted an application with an insurance certificate from our insurance carrier that ensures all the Lions Clubs in the, in the country. There were two blocks that were not checked. And we received a notification from the village that these, excuse me, those blocks needed to be checked. And also, there was a recommendation that, that wording be added. The Village of Baldwinsville, its elected officials and employees are named as additional insured on a primary and non-contributory basis. Our insurance carrier was not willing to add that to our certificate of insurance. And so we canceled the event. We checked later with a private insurance carrier. An insurance that would meet the village's requirements would be $400 plus another $125 for that phraseology to be added to the certificate. This we cannot afford. And, you know, if this is a requirement for the Lions Club to have activities within community park, we just can't do it. You know, that's basically the problem. Our insurance carrier, we have a million, 2 million coverage, but we cannot add that phrase to our policy.
There's, the insurance carrier for the, for the Lions, as Bert says, is for the thousands of Lions Clubs within the United States. Each Lions Club is individually insured by this blanket policy. I think our carrier was saying if we make an exception for you, the administrative costs are going to be crazy for them to consider these kinds of adjustments for other policies. This is the standard policy. It's accepted within the industry. We've not been made aware of any other occasions where this was a requirement. And so we're just questioning, first of all, if this is going to happen, we may need to take some of our fundraisers away from the community. And if that's not the case, we'd be happy to stay here and continue using facilities within the community or any other solutions that might come up from the insurance carrier or the board here.
It was initially a recommendation. It turned into a requirement.
Okay. And we have our insurance expert carrier with us this evening. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to you, sir.
I'm familiar with this particular situation. And I agree it's unfortunate. As far as a requirement, oh, I don't know. A number of years ago, we put out some recommendations or requirements when an entity would use a public park. The Paper Mill Island or, you know, the community park, Mercer Park. Anybody's using that, they would have to name the village as an additional insured on a primary basis. That requirement or suggestion, recommendation, I guess you would say, is pretty standard language these days. Most contracts that anybody is getting involved with, you'll find that that wording is pretty standard. If you do any business with the state of New York, for instance, their requirements, their insurance requirements are three or four pages long. I mean, this, so this particular situation, although I agree with you that it would be nice to include everybody. But at some point, I think we have to be, try to be consistent and protect the village at the same time. So this particular requirement, I don't think is prohibitive necessarily. I agree that, you know, no one wants to spend any extra money. But at what point do we say, okay, well, we're gonna make an exception here, but we can't make an exception here? So that's, I guess that's not my call. I can only recommend what, what I think the insurance should, should do for the village.
If I could, we did secure the additional insured requirement. And did ask, you know, the Village of Baldwinsville was added as an additional insured. It was the additional wording beyond the additional insured list that was creating the problem. And we, we, we don't want to push the issue onto the village to make that part of the permitting application process. Paper Mill Island, I understand, is a much larger, heavily trafficked venue. The smaller parks with smaller fundraisers are better controlled than the park is when there's nobody there. So I'm not sure why you're saying the, it wasn't just listing the village as the additional insured, it was adding the wording for the additional with, basically the primary.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. And I, yeah.
So is that, is that something that is not required? The additional wording beyond just naming the village as additional insured?
I'm not on the certificate that when we asked to name them, I think it was.
That's the sample that was, that we give to.
Yeah. Okay, so this particular sample was, that goes with the permit for use of parks other than the Paper Mill Island. Right on the sample, it does say that the primary non-contributory wording is on that sample.
It is on that for Paper Mill Island, but not the remaining parks?
This one too.
We have a few different ones. One for Paper Mill Island and one for other locations, other village-owned parks. And it is on both, but just different requirements.
Uniformly required by other groups using the parks for purposes other than just individual families?
Other than? Yes.
See, what I'm saying is it's like the ball league or the people who rent the.
Well, I know that, you know, we did, we went over the FOIL request and Mr. Mead and another individual went through in our applications. And they, all the ones that he did look at had it.
Except.
Except for the ball field.
Except for the softball diamond and little league field.
We don't do an application for the little league. But it was, yes, it was for the community park ball field that we did not have it on. But all the other events and parks, they each had it.
There are four events.
Right.
Yeah.
That, yes.
And is it possible there's other events happening that are not happening?
No. I mean, I, I gave them everything that the.
Oh, no, I didn't. I know you re-looked at everything you had. But I'm saying, is it possible, for instance, over at McCary Park, when they do their trunk sale in the street? Is that something that's permitted or allowed? And is there a difference?
We don't have a permit process for McCary Park. I mean, if, for example, they're public parks. So if anyone went there without our knowledge, you know, obviously, they wouldn't have submitted the insurance, but we aren't aware of it. But anyone that does come through us, we give them our requirements. And they reserve the area. But if they don't reserve the area, you know, they can go there and just have an event. And no, they, obviously, they wouldn't send us insurance.
Dan, would a home, hold harmless, sign, signing hold harmless the village board and its officers and directors? Would that suffice or not?
Well, I guess that would be more of a legal question. But I know that that, that has been discussed in the past, not necessarily here. I am aware of, of other situations where they do sign a hold harmless agreement and whatnot. So again, I think that would be up to, up to the board on whether they feel comfortable with that, that change.
The point in question is the naming of the trustees and officials. That's pointing contention here.
No, I think the point of contention is just that their particular insurance company was not able to, they were able to add additional insured, but the wording where it says that we want additional insurance on a primary and non-contributory basis, that part of the wording is what they were having a problem with. So they didn't have a problem naming the elected officials and whatnot on the policy.
Exactly. I agree with that absolutely.
So by meaning just the village.
I'm sorry.
The village board, it not, wouldn't be covered underneath? Just them generally naming the village as an additional insured? We wouldn't be included under that umbrella?
No, we were, we were just making sure, you know, that everybody knew what we were talking about. It's the village, the village board, elected officials. Anybody was named in that suit, we were trying to be sure that.
I'm just wondering if we would still be covered under language that simply stated that the additional insured was the village of Baldwinsville. Hence, everybody.
Well, and by non-contributory, maybe, I think I understand what it means. Is if there is a suit, if something happens, the Lions Insurance basically covers the village employees that's so named under their policy as primary coverage. Whereas if you don't have non-contributory, by listing the village, yes, we're, we're ensuring the village for their liability. But if there's fault found for them, their insurance is going to respond. There's gonna be cooperation or working together between the two insurance carriers and so on.
Well, if they didn't have the non-contributory on there.
That's what I'm saying. So that's, that's the word that is the real issue, is the non-contributory. It's basically saying, no matter what, and that's subject to interpretation, within reason, we'll say. Our, the Lions Insurance protects everybody named within reason. As opposed to, we're just gonna let everybody figure it out if something bad happens.
Yeah, you're right.
These are small events. That's, I guess that's the point we're trying to make. It's not having, you know, 1,000 people at Paper Mill Island with fireworks and alcohol. This was a very small event. And there's people down in the village all the time who have absolutely no supervision. At least if we're having a small event, we're trying to supervise.
Yeah, I guess, like I said.
But that, that's, that's, that's the essence of the problem, is the non-contributory.
Okay, I don't think we're gonna hash this out this evening.
Okay.
I think we probably need to get together with you, Dan, and, and see if we need to do something different in the future. This body, we depend upon our attorneys, we depend upon engineers, we depend upon professionals in their field to help us make decisions. Far be it from me to, to try and outguess the insurance industry. I apologize for the fact you had to cancel an event. Please work with us in the future. We will do our best to make sure everything can come off. And, and if Mo and Dan can see if you can come up with a way that we can facilitate these, not just their events, but like alumni gatherings or weddings or whatever else goes on in our facilities.
Well, I mean, and we have, and we certainly will, you know, try to come up with something else. But, you know, this was a recommendation.
Right.
Because we did meet a few years ago, and this is what was decided, and that's what we've been fighting by. So it wasn't anything personal or.
Right. Understood.
You know, we just kind of went along with what we had in front of us.
Just so I'm clear, can you give me an example of what, a situation that could possibly have happened that would have subjected us if that language wasn't in there?
Maybe didn't have what?
If the language wasn't in there to cover us specifically, what, what could have been that would subject us to liability?
You know, I think what we're saying is by naming the elected officials and the employees and whatnot, we're just being, we're just making sure that everybody knows, you know, when they're suing the village of Baldwinsville, this is who we're covering. We're not just, so, so we're not just saying, okay, well, technically, yeah, the village of Baldwinsville would be the village board and whatnot. But we just, I, I think it's just become, oh. Just, just in the last few years, it's just become more and more important to, in when you have these lawsuits and stuff like this, that everybody is named who should be named. We're not taking any chances that, oh, well, we, you know, we named the village of Baldwinsville, but that doesn't mean we're gonna cover the employee. So if their employee was involved in the, and they were negligent somehow, the village of Baldwinsville's insurance wouldn't necessarily cover that employee unless he was acting in the scope of, of the village's business.
One other, one other issue is defense.
Yes.
In other words, in litigation, the village could be sued. And then in, in the litigation itself, individuals or employees or elected officials could be named individually. And the question then becomes whether the insurance company is gonna be providing a defense. They said we'll provide a defense for the village, but not for the people that are, that are named individually. And they would have to go out, go out and get their own counsel, basically. So.
Aren't elected officials automatically identified in the village law?
They're identified. The question, my guess would be whether the, whether the policy would, would cover their defense on an individual basis, particularly if there's individual activities that are, that are cited, which may or, also may or may not be outside, and there might be issues. Well, and I think possibly you're into that situation where which insurance company is gonna provide the defense? Lion policy because it's non-contributory? Or the village policy because that wording is not there? And we say it's your fault, and you say it's our fault. And that's where the.
That's under trial.
Head knocking starts, yes. Well, thank you. We appreciate you letting us have our say and hope we can work this out. We wanna work it out. And as you know, we have an pending application, so we'll try to work on that too.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Moving on to trustees comments. Why don't we start with trustee Dryden? Whoop. Oh. Sorry. My apologies. Yep, right there is fine for the camera can see you.
Last minute entry. Hi, I'm Mike Conway, retired art teacher from Baldwinsville. Many years teaching art at Reynolds Elementary and currently substitute teacher in the district. And also, I currently also do a, a art workshop at Canton Woods Arts, or Center. Hi, Ruth.
Hello.
And so over the last couple of years, I've been going from place to place and seeing along various canals and waterways artwork being displayed. Couple places, I'll get to my idea in a minute here. But downtown Syracuse has a series of kiosks on Salina Street right near the public library. Here's one, I'm gonna put it up to the screen. I think you can see it. Maybe?
Got it.
And I'll leave these with you. They're all weathered. This one, it was taken in snow up to my knees next to a parking meter that I couldn't get to. And then this one was recently, just a few weeks ago in Fulton, near the Kitty's and Mimi's diner and near the waterway, similar to our canalway. And shall leave also. Oswego has a series of kiosks, that's what I'm gonna call them, kiosks, where they, these though are kind of semi-permanent. And the one in Fulton looks like it's permanent. It's designated to show their wildlife on the Oswego River at that area. And it's permanent. My idea would be to have some kiosks along the canalway to beautify it, which is very nice now. But one thing I've noticed, and again, I'm prejudiced being an art teacher, an arts person. Baldwinsville is very good with sports and athletics year-round and music. There's even lately, just Canton Woods had a music event. And a couple had been canceled, I hear locally. But a lot of music events. But art is a little bit harder because it's, you know, something you don't have a group doing necessarily. So this would be a way to have artwork. To speed this up, my idea that I thought about would be to include, for instance, the high school students who are art majors, perhaps juniors and seniors who have portfolios and such. And then they could have perhaps artwork with a nature or Baldwinsville wildlife, et cetera, theme to it that could be done the same way downtown Syracuse has something called the Syracuse Poster Projects. And this one that I had originally showed you is one example. And I'll, again, I've got some more examples I can leave with you. There's a fellow that conducts those yearly. And they do it with poetry and illustration. But ours could be done as posters, copies of the original artwork. And it could be done as an annual contest. Could be done with Kiwi Boys folks. It could be done with local folks who are talented. There could be some sort of judging or whatever. And I think it bears some merit. And it would also be a nice addition to the canal area. So that's all I have to say, and I'll leave you that stuff later. So that's all I have to say and I'll leave you that stuff later. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Maybe some ideas for reaching out. I don't know if you're familiar with the Baldenville Center for the Arts.
Yeah.
But they do, you know, several projects and they, they are trying to promote arts, you know, beyond just music and whatnot. So this might be something that if it required any sort of fundraising or whatever, they might, you know, want to, want to get involved with it. And then my other thought is if the construction of the actual kiosks, there's very often young men looking for their Eagle Scout projects in the community that if you reached out to maybe the local Boy Scout troops, you might get, get a, an Eagle Scout to help you build, you know, the actual kiosks. And I think, you know, the village would be happy to work with you in terms of placements and stuff like that.
Girl Scouts too.
Oh, yeah.
One of the Girl Scouts did the four corner mural.
Yeah. So just a couple of ideas to, to kind of take it to the next level to, to see if we can get some subtraction for you.
How are these, how are these protected from the weather?
There, I had also had some conversation with Assemblyman Will Barkley in Phoenix, yeah, Fulton, his office through some artwork they did. And there's a, there's a similar to the Baldenville Art Group in Fulton. That's doing a pretty good job and trying to develop the same kind of thing there. And one of his folks gave me some statistics about pricing and people to contact and so on. These are, the one, well, of course, there's one also similar near Fort Niagara in Oswego. And these things, of course, being in Oswego are all weather for sure. And they seem to be very sturdy. My idea would be not to have something that could be replaceable, especially during the summertime, you know.
Very good. That's a good idea. Are there any other citizens hiding out there?
No, I think we're set.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Now we'll go to trustee Dryden.
I'm all set.
Excellent. Just the agenda. Thank you. Trustee Shepherd.
The agenda's good. Thanks.
Trustee McDonald.
I just want to say it was nice to see activities in the village again this weekend with the fireworks. So I'm hoping that the event was successful for the Rotary Club and appreciate the sponsor that they found to put on the fireworks display, which I'm sure a lot of people appreciated in the village.
Something that I noticed, I drove through a couple of times. And I was impressed that I know on Facebook and other places.
Areas to park were identified and people were using all these different sites and pedestrian traffic through the village was heavy with people headed to the island. But as opposed to everybody trying to park at the island, they were scattered throughout the community.
Ruth.
Just the agenda. Thank you.
Trustee Wilder.
I am going to request a very brief executive session. And I mean, brief, to discuss an updated contract issue.
Okay. Is it going under new business?
Yes.
It goes. I already canceled that C and D, so it's going to be E. Okay. And now I'm going to call on trustee Stevens. So there's a couple of motions that I'd like to add to the agenda since someone else brought them up. I see under new business, a motion to purchase 200 new water meters at a cost of $46,000.
And item D, a motion to authorize the mayor to approve and sign a final application for the 2021-22 Main Street grant that's due September 3rd. Other than that, I don't really, I was, I agree with, with Meg. It was kind of nice to see the village active again. We've been quiet for a while with a concert Friday and Saturday. Hopefully things will continue along those lines. Department heads.
First on the list is the attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda. Fine, thanks.
Okay. Code's office.
I'll stick with the agenda.
Village clerk.
I too will stick with the agenda.
You've got a pattern here. Tricia.
I will also stick to the agenda.
Senior center.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to say a few things. So anyways, I just want to remind folks that we are wearing masks at the senior center regardless of your vaccine, vaccine status. This is very important. We appreciate your cooperation with that. To continue that, the congregate meal for the senior lunch is coming back indoors. The county has determined that this meal is available for only vaccinated people. So if you plan to participate in the indoor meal, you must be vaccinated. You must show us proof of your vaccine. Wear your mask until you're seated at the table. So we have been doing the takeaway meal and they are trying to accommodate folks by continuing that as well. So if you are unvaccinated or your comfort level has not quite got to where you want to be inside, you could still take part in the meal, but it will be the takeaway meal. For both of these things, you must make a reservation. So please call the senior center. We'll explain it to you better and also make sure you get your reservation for whichever one of those options meets your needs. Also, we're partnering with Onadaga County Health Department for a grant they got supporting healthy schools and communities. It promotes physical activity and good nutrition. And the first thing that we're going to do is a food box venture, which actually involves Emmy's Farm. They're doing a $10 food box, produce box. So call the senior center about that and we'll give you more information. But one important thing is you can use your farmer's market coupons for this. So give us a call and we'll explain that to you a little bit more. And our car show is set for Monday, the 23rd. So please hope with us that the rain stops by then. That's Monday night, the 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00. George Leehow will be the music and the Canal Side Cafe will be providing the food. Lots of fun raffles. The cars are beautiful. So if the sun shines, it will go off really well. If not, we'll see you on the 30th. And finally, the Walk for the Woods is going to happen this year on September 18th, in person, 9:00, rain or shine. If you prefer to do it virtually, you can walk any day, anytime that you prefer, from September 1st until the end of September. So just give us a call for more information about that or check the village website. And that's it. Thank you.
Public Works.
Stephen Rooster. The island last weekend, both nights, we didn't have any problem, we didn't have any problems. Both, both events went very well from public work standard, standard. The Rotary Club is just fantastic. They, I think they had, their, their event was, was, was busy. They're great to work with. Ken, I'm not sure their last name, Ken and Scott. Well, I told Scott, he's got the patience of a saint. But those events went great. They cleaned the place up great. And it just, it's a great organization to work with and there was no issues on our side at all with, with either day. Just to throw that out real quick. Our black topping is finally done, all the black topping and all the coating of the roads. It worked out, it worked out really well. We did more this year than we've done in, in a lot of years. That, that finally got finished up a couple of weeks ago. The crosswalks got in up by Brown and Oswego, the crosswalk signs. Did some adjusting on them. They made it two weeks. The other ones, not so good. But hopefully that'll work and we'll, we'll see. The, the big news of the day was the flood. Last night, it started, this morning, it started right around 3:00. I called Cory Perkins, he's the new supervisor for the water department over there. And he wasn't in 10 minutes and was calling me and it's just, we haven't had water like this in 20 years. And I get up and met him down on, down on Elbrow River Lane. We always check, we check that trunk main that goes to the county pump stations. And once that's backed up, the whole village backs up. And both sides of the river were backed up. We got so much rain and both sides were, and the sewer system, the sewer systems were full right to the top, right, right to the top of manholes. And the problem with that, and then we had all the runoff. I mean, we had runoff that was two feet above the catch spaces. Coming down off Oswego, or East Tennessee Street Hill, Oswego Street, down by Cooper's. It's outside the village, but we had, down at Curtis Ave, got hit really hard. Just a ton of water. They got hold the fire department early on because the fire department was out also. Tread pump sellers and we let them know the problem with the sewers being backed up with the, the cellar drains. And that's why the cellar drains are illegal, because when the sewer backs up, you're getting sewer water in your house. And the houses that had, a lot of them had sewer drains were getting constant water coming in. And we just, we let the fire department know that, you know, this is coming from, a lot of it's coming from the sewers. A lot of it's coming from around the houses, but it's not going to go away until the sewer mains go down. So I think they went into just to securing a lot of the utilities, but they're out. The highway came in and started closing some roads down around Mechanic Street and some of that areas. Worked really good with the county sewers. I, I talked to a couple of their supervisors. I talked to their metro right away and right around 4:00, he said he had 200 alarms, 200 plus alarms coming from their pump stations. And I talked to Les Brown. They were really good. Mike Brockdashiell, he's a local, he's a local guy in town. He was running from one plant to the other. Because what happens is our line's going to their pump stations and when their pump stations can't handle it, then ours just doesn't go anywhere. And they were real good. Then they were real good about telling me where they were and how, how, how theirs were finally starting to move the water down. And as it started moving down, we could, we could adjust to what we were doing. Everybody was fantastic that I talked to. I mean, a lot of people got flooded out. Their homes got flooded out, their basements got flooded out. Over here, Jamie's got it really hard and I stopped to talk with him. He was great. He just said, you know, I don't have a basement, you know, because we went through this 20 years ago. Just try to get somebody to, to, to fix the basement, or not the basement, but fix their, just their waterlogged floors and some of their drawers and what have you. But a lot of the damage, there was a lot of water. We did have problems up on Ellsworth Road where it just wouldn't handle it. And the creek at Ellsworth Road was up as high as the pump station. So we did end up pumping into the creek there. We haven't had to do that in years. Usually when that backs up, we take our back truck and we, we'll, we'll take that water out. We'll bring it down to the village and dump it in the manhole and get rid of it. We'll do that 10 times or so and it catches up. All the manholes in the village are full. So we just couldn't do that. So part of that is we have to notify the DEC. Notify the DEC. They said, go ahead, do it. Then they sent this new form that we've never seen before. And we do have a new engineer and thank God. I called him, asked if we knew what the form was. He said, he did, because he had two hours to act on it. He took care of that. So we're in good shape. The water's going down and once it finally stopped raining, things started to settle out, settle down a little bit. But there's quite a bit of damage and hats off to all the people that usually they get so upset and they just understood. We told them, we just, it's a time thing. And so there was a lot of activity during the day. And other than that, we're going, getting back to normal now.
It's very flooding on Ellsworth Road. There used to be a problem from the detention, retention basin of that development.
Yes, yep. There's a problem there where it goes under the road and that was coming over the road also. It's not getting under that road.
Okay.
There is a problem that, yes. So other than that, listeners, questions? Oh, we did hear from the county on the grant for the playgrounds for community park. The environmental review, we put in the beginning of the week and they called and said, you're good. So we also talked to engineer Greg. We have to do Greg and engineer Greg. They're going to help us put that together. They're putting us back together for the other municipality, almost the same thing. And we hope to get that moving here as soon as.
And you'll be installing the Lions donated.
We want to do that too also, yes.
Swing.
Yep, yep. We're just, we want to put that in a different spot, but, and, and just so everyone knows, the ball fields, you know, a couple of years, they didn't get used at all and they are just used constant. I mean, they're every day, there's doubleheader down there. The parks get, that parks gets used. All the parks get used a lot. Well, Mo would know that. We're always putting signs out for the parks. But since COVID, it's just picked up. Every weekend, there's something going on. And Bursia Park and the different parks and Community Park is just slightly.
And we've been turning people away.
Yeah, yeah. Community parks are still busy every, every night and weekends. So there's been a lot of use on the parks.
That's what they're for.
Other than that, I'm good.
Okay, chief. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. One thing in relation to the usage of Paper Mill Island that came apparent. And I don't know how it happened, quite frankly, because I was not involved in the writing of the contract with the promoter that the village is contracted with to provide concerts on the island. But I was tasked with reviewing both of those because the promoter was having some difficulty meeting the security requirements. And when I reviewed the, the contract that the promoter has versus the contract that anyone else might use, I found that the contract that the promoter that the village is contracted with, his security requirements is greatly reduced from that of anyone else. So I would ask this board and, and our attorney to, to review those documents. And my recommendation would be that they be consistent. I, I just don't think it's fair that another promoter might come to the village and have much greater expenses exposed to them than the one that the village is contracted with. And maybe there was some reason at that point in time. I don't know. I didn't draft that. I wasn't consulted about that reduction. But it does exist and I think this board should be aware of it. And, and we should find some consistency between those two documents. That's only my recommendation to the board. Other than that, I would echo Chuck's comments. Things went off quite well. We were a little shaky earlier in the week whether certain requirements were going to be met or not. Fortunately, they were and, and that was very nice to see the island being utilized and, and people in town and in the village being active. And hopefully it can, can remain in, in that fashion. And other than that, I would like to speak to the item on the agenda, once we get to it, that addresses our organization. Unless there's questions for.
Apparently none.
Thank you.
Pending business.
Oh, did I cover everybody? Yes.
Yes.
Under pending business, the post-retirement benefit update. Do you, I'll take the lead on this, Meg, or are we all?
Sure. We've been discussing for a while now adding a benefit to our employee handbook that will give employees who have been with the village for at least 15 years of full-time, of full-term service, a, a benefit of post-retirement medical insurance. We have settled on language that would offer the employee continuation in the village medical insurance program. The village would pay 70% of the premium cost of an individual coverage through our policies. And the retiree would be eligible for that benefit either for up to three years or until they become eligible for Medicare, whichever occurs first. So it's a benefit that both of our unions have enjoyed and we felt that was appropriate to extend that benefit to the other employees of the village who are not covered under any union contracts. So with that said, there, there is a motion on the floor to add this language to the employee handbook section 706. Do I need to read the entirety of the?
Is the board comfortable in acting on this, this evening?
If so, I don't know what you're inter, can she just make a motion to update the employee handbook as written?
Yes.
As opposed to reading the entire paragraph? Okay, there you go, Meg.
Thank you. Then I would like to make that motion to add the language on the agenda to the employee handbook section 706.
Someone, could we have a second? On any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. New business. Motion to accept the resignation of zoning board of appeals member Frederick Thomas, effective August 9th, 2021.
I'll make the motion with regrets.
Second.
If I may say something.
Discussion.
For discussion? No, Fred was a wonderful member of the zoning board of appeals. He was one of the first to go out to the site, take measurements, look at like items throughout the village, even outside the village, to get, you know, an eye for what the applicant was looking to do with their property and compare it with what's already existing. He is, he was 48 years on the zoning board of appeals for the town of Van Buren. And after he, after they consolidated their boards, he felt the need to continue service, so he came to our board, and he was, again, he was just a very great member. Like I said, he was always out there, looking at the projects, really, you know, a lot of insight with his experience, and just, he's going to be missed.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Could I have a motion to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Charles Giannino, effective August 31st, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
Second. And let's turn this over to the chief, he wished to address this.
Yes, Chaz, he goes by Chaz, everyone knows him as Chaz. Chaz, when we started our part-time police officer program, Chaz was one of the first people hired, might have been the first. He's a village resident, he had been hounding me for some time to work here. He's retired from Onondaga County Sheriff's Office, he'd worked there a number of years, and he's been with us for eight years now. And his job requirement has changed in his primary career now that he's retired from the sheriffs, and he's doing a little more traveling, and being able to work some shifts with us just wasn't fitting into his schedule with his new schedule. But he just wanted to convey, I think he did an accurate job in his letter there, how much he enjoyed working for us and the opportunity to do so. And he came in and met with Mike Lockwood and I yesterday, and had nothing but great things to say about the organization and being able to work for the village. And as I said, he's a village resident, he'll be missed by us, but we appreciate him putting in some additional years with us on top of the service he gave down on that county.
Excellent. We have a motion. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Carried.
I would, could I have a motion to purchase 200 new water meters at a cost of $46,000, which will come out of the water fund? We'll talk to you exactly eventually.
I'm assuming these were bid at some point in time? Chuck? These water meters, I'm assuming they're off a bid that's already established?
Yes.
They're standardized also, we're doing not multiple different kinds of bid, or meters throughout the village. This is a program we started on replacing meters umpteen years ago, and.
Excuse me, I don't believe this is off the bid, but this is, we're getting these right from the company.
Senator State Director?
They're the only place we can get them. Not two meters. This is where we purchased them last time, too.
Will it just come out of this water fund or water sewer?
Water sewer. We're trying to, so we need to talk to you, and I'll just.
The water meter, water, the sewer billing is based upon water meter readings, the water usage, so it will come from both accounts.
Correct. We did the half and half last time.
Yeah, we did.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Work with Anna. Well, get over it. Could I have a motion to authorize the mayor to approve and sign the final application for the 2021-22 Main Street grant that's due September 3rd?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second with a question. So you come up with a plan, and you've distributed the money how you feel is fair, and it's less than what people were thinking they could possibly get, and therefore they can't afford to do the work. What does this, happens to that portion of allocated funds? Do you redistribute it to people who've already been awarded?
Yes.
Do you open backup to people who have been turned away?
No one's been turned away other than projects that did not comply with the grant, like parking lots. So no, that money would be redistributed, and those percentages would change then if someone drops out.
So there's not a lot of rework or reconsidering of projects and all that stuff?
No, not at all.
After this process is set in place?
Right.
It could be, well, we've decided that everybody's going to be only, only able to get 40% of the match, and throw it all out there, and then five people say they can't do it, then it comes back and maybe it turns into 50%.
That's the case. We had 29 applicants, so the, it was very popular. We may have to narrow our scope as to the geographic location to cut the funds. We're looking at $500,000 grant, and just the grant portion of these projects is over $1.6 million in work, so there's obviously no way to spread that $500,000 very far.
In my understanding, Greg, was the minimum contribution was 25%?
The minimum contribution from the private property owner would be 25%, and then the county would match 75. In the last round of grants we did, it was closer to a 30-70 matching because of the distribution of funds.
So is it, is it an applicant only still responsible for that 25%? If they had asked for round numbers, somebody asked for $10,000, would they in turn only have to spend $1,250?
So that individual property owner, if the match was 25-75, would then have to come up with the 25%.
Okay, so if they got half of that, they would only have to come up with still half of?
Right.
Okay. So somebody had an idea about a $100,000 project, thought they were going to get 75, but only got 50, they still don't have to come up with that 50, they can just reduce the size of the scale of project?
They could reduce the scale of the project, absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. And then, we have the argument on the agenda is an executive session.
You're into an executive session?
I'll make the motion.
You're into an executive session.
Senator Biden. Contrary. Contrary to the. Contrary to the. We expect no. No action? Action. That's correct. I'll make the motion. I seconded it. Fair.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you for visiting this evening.